It is six oh one, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Rutland Select Board and Board of Public Works. Um, we are meeting in the lower, it's a Monday, January twenty second, twenty twenty four, six oh one P M. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. Uh, we are on Zoom, I think.
We are, our screen isn't working, but folks are still on Zoom and Peter's gonna let me know if anybody wants to to speak.
Awesome, perfect, thank you. So we are on Zoom, although we don't see that we're on Zoom. Um, and we are also being livestreamed on local access cable and being recorded for re-airing on local access TV as well as YouTube and other digital formats. Um, before I go into the pledge, does FinCom wanna open or are you?
Alex did indicate he's coming.
Okay, so.
We're gonna wait a few minutes for him to get here.
We can wait. I don't wanna rush anybody.
We can wait till Alex gets here.
Okay.
Make a motion though, if I have a screen view.
Second. It sounds like FinCom's open. So we have some just regular ra- random business to start, so if we start with the pledge and everything and then hopefully Alex will wander in. I will, I'll look for a motion to approve Treasury wa- uh, Treasury warrant and payroll.
Everyone was there?
This is just Treasury warrant.
Uh, make a motion to approve Treasury warrant twenty four dash fifteen and payroll twenty four dash PW fifteen.
Motion, is there a second?
Aye, second.
Motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Austin, anything of note?
I just, uh, this warrant will incorporate obviously one of our first storms, major storms, uh, so it's not nice, we'll have, um, take a little bit of a hit, um, after ordering several batches of, uh, salt and sand, but other than that, nothing.
The chair, yeah. Will you get into where we stand on the budget for that? With the hit that we took, are we still running kinda close to normal?
Yeah, I mean, so, uh, as with every warrant cycle, the town accountant will send out, um, the budget to actual report as well, but in the quarterly report, um, we'll also give an update where we stand year to date and for the rest of the budget too.
Um, any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve. I'll take a roll call, Harry.
Second, aye.
Second, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Gavin, aye.
Waitman, aye. And we have, uh, set a regular meeting minutes and executive session meeting minutes from January eighth, twenty twenty four. Both, um, meet, it was the same night, both meetings had full attendance. Um, as for release of the executive session minutes, um, I think that we should not release them at this time as some of them are, um, for ongoing negotiations.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say ask how the board felt about the meeting minutes, the executive session minutes not being released at this time.
I just have one quick question though. Since we had three different topics, if we were to at some point need to release one or more, should, I don't know. Is it, how do we do that? Or does it have to be the whole?
I guess if there came a time that you wanted to release a portion of it, at that time we could make a motion specific to the portion you wanna release and then I will separate them out on a different set of minutes so that just that section would be posted, if the board is amenable to that solution.
Alright, so at this time we'll release now. Um, okay, so start, uh, make a motion to approve meeting minutes from January eighth, two thousand twenty four, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second. We have a meeting, um, motion and a second, was there any comments or questions on the, um, meeting minutes? Thank you, Tamika. Hearing none, I will take a roll call for the regular scheduled meeting minutes. Harry.
Second, aye.
Madam.
Ledger, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Waitman, aye.
I make a motion to approve the executive session, uh, meeting from January eighth, two thousand twenty four with minutes not to be released to the public at this time.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second, second. Questions, comments, concerns, edits? Thank you, Tamika, I think you captured everything well. Um, hearing none, we'll call Harry.
Second, aye.
Madam.
Ledger, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Waitman, aye. Um, moving into member comments and announcements. Um, we had, uh, the bylaw, ad hoc bylaw committee held their first, uh, public information session yesterday for the bylaw review. Um, I think that there were about five or six people in attendance. Um, I unfortunately was not. Um, I'm try, I'm going to try to make the additional ones. There's three more scheduled for the upcoming Sundays from, uh, I think one to four P M. here in the library, um, in the Blair, the big media, meeting room down here in the basement, the Blair Room. Um, and that's to review the bylaws, the proposed bylaw changes, um, for general and zoning. Uh, yes, so we have Sunday, January twenty eighth, uh, Sunday, February fourth, Sunday, February eleventh, one to four P M. Here in the lower level. The special town meeting for the bylaws, um, is Thursday, February fifteenth, um, here in the library. Lower level in the Blair Room at six P M. Um, so please add that to the list. Um, we have, uh, annual town election will be held in May as usual. We have a number of, um, opening, openings on the elected boards. Um, Tamika and Austin have put together a nice list of the openings on the town website uh, with a little bit of a synopsis as to the number of seats available, the length of time, meeting schedule, um, any support staff that's applicable in the roles and responsibilities. Um, so just for the public, there's a board of, uh, there's a board of assessors, board of health, library trustees, planning board, select board, town clerk, Waukesha Regional School District School Committee, Southern Worcester Regional, Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School District School Committee and town moderator are all, um, have open position, at least one open position, if not more. Um, again, I think the link is right on the, I know the link is right on the homepage of the website, um, so feel free to go and check that out. Um, I think we will talk about the schedule. Um, papers can be pulled starting, I think, um, Thursday, February eighth, twenty twenty four, um, to receive signatures and they'll be due back in town hall at the town clerk's office by my, on, by Monday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Um, this past weekend was the Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference or Annual Meeting and Trade Show. Um, I attended, I think, and Austin was there and Ally, our H R coordinator, was there as well. Um, I will put together a synopsis of the, uh, sessions that I attended and present them at our next meeting. Um, but there was a big push on kind of ways to take advantage of the federal funding that's available, um, that I think requires a decent amount of investment for like everything, the engineering and the, um, pre-work and everything. But I'm sure maybe Austin will cover a little bit also, but I'll add it to the agenda for next meeting as a specific item. Um, does anyone else have any, um, comments or question, announcements? I think D P W has been doing a great job with the storms that we've had. We've had some unexpected, uh, storms. I think Saturday night especially was a little dicey, um, but I appreciate the work that everybody's been doing to make sure that, um, we're good to go between D P W, public safety and all of our town offices and department heads and staff. So thank you all. Um, moving into public comments, is there anyone here for public comments? Name and address, please.
Uh, Jean Sigliano, twenty seven Susie Drive. I'm here, um, just 'cause you also say you're the Board of Public Works. So I'm wondering, I never really see anything on the agenda about the water problems and what's being done to clarify our water or maybe hook into Quabin? Because I heard Boston is looking for more hookups and it goes right under our reservoir. So are we looking into that? When do you meet as a Board of Public Works and discuss those things?
So, Austin, I don't know. We meet currently at Board of Public Works as kind of needed. We don't hold separate or additional meetings, they're within our select board meetings currently. The water topic is an ongoing topic, um, of consideration kind of from the administrator's office and our D P W and the water staff. Um, and we've had conversations as to looking for an additional water source, um, as well as the, the repair work. I think Austin usually gives updates in his town administrator update outside of the Board of Public Works meetings for the work that's going on at the water treatment plant. Um, I know Austin and I have had some conversations, um, about potentially looking at other avenues as well to address the water, um, concerns. So it's an ongoing kind of conversation and I think as we are looking at the remaining ARPA money and clearing the remaining free cash, um, accounts, uh, looking at investment into improvement as well as diversifying the water source.
So are, have we approached Boston at all?
Uh, yes, I mean, that's a little premature to, to go to Boston. Um, connecting to the Waukesha Reservoir is a several, getting into the tens of millions of dollars investment. Uh, before we make that decision, which is a community decision, um, the board, well, previous select board, uh, had approved a secondary water source study. Um, there are several options in Rutland for a secondary water source. There's some possible well sites, there's possibly to connect to a neighboring community. There's the aqueduct that you mentioned. So, um, the study that was approved, uh, by the board is now, well, that was almost two years ago. So we, we did receive some updated pricing, um, on that study. It's my intent, um, at a future meeting, uh, in early February to ask the board for revised ARPA funding, uh, for that study, but that study certainly doesn't, um, happen overnight. That's a several month process and they weigh every options and every option then provide an analysis to the community. Um, on the water, on the water department side, um, the F Y twenty five budget will include some investments in some of our infrastructure, including the, uh, water treatment plant, but also some of the distribution system that we have. As everyone knows, we have lots of old infrastructure underground too, so, so kind of a multi-pronged approach, uh, starting from the source. But then, um, you know, the whole process involved to get it to your house, so. Uh, but gotta start with the study, uh, the secondary water source study first to see what are, what are the options and how feasible are they for, for the community? Uh, but certainly, uh, the M W R A is, is seeking new customers. They've waived the multimillion dollar, um, entrance fee, if you will. Um, certainly they don't, uh, pay for the infrastructure, so that's still a significant community investment, but something I think as a community will definitely have to explore.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up and keeping it on all of, you know, all of us accountable to it. So, thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Name and address.
Darren Ross, five Rufus Button. Um, have you guys, has anybody come to you, asked for a traffic study or to go to do a traffic study, Palmagussett versus Main Street? Um, it's getting unbearable and, um, there, I actually witnessed some people taking the, the, uh, they blocked the Catholic church on the side. Lady gets out of her car the other day, moves the, moves the pylon so she can go through the Catholic church. The public safety, well, community hall thing is a drag race. We need to do something. We need to look at it. I don't know if you guys have reached out to anybody, but it's getting unbearable. So, uh, I don't know if you guys can help us or get it started, but we have to do something.
Darren, are you talking about the intersection itself?
Palmagussett, Main Street is, is unbearable in the morning. It's, when you're coming up, it starts about where, um, Central Hill is and that, that's where the traffic starts. So the first thing is everybody's peeling off to go to, um, Memorial Drive. Then we, the next group peels off and goes through the community center and then a bunch of them go through the Catholic church and they kinda try to go through the barrier that the, I don't know, the deacons puts up every day, but someone takes it down for them. And then, then there's people kinda trying to jump up on the curb, on the side of the Catholic church, trying to get through. It's, it's, we gotta do something. It's, there's no stoplight, nobody stops. There's gonna be a serious accident with the Dunkin' Donuts, trying to get into Dunkin' Donuts. Um, I don't know if you guys can help us out, but.
Austin, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, it's funny, I mean, I, uh, I, I grew up driving through Rutland and I've, obviously I didn't appreciate the traffic problems until I got a job here. Um, but, but one of my first conversations was actually with Mastod, as you know, it's a state-owned road, Main Street. Um, one of the first conversations, uh, was trying to, to leverage the addition, the, the current state project that we have for possibly, you know, in addition to that project. No surprise they said no, but, um, they actually studied that intersection, you know, several years ago. Uh, and the traffic at that point actually called for a traffic signal. They weren't recommending a traffic signal, they're actually recommending like what they're installing everywhere around about. Um, I asked, alright, perfect, when, when can you start? Um, no surprise they said, whoa, whoa, hold on, hold on. Um, so it's gonna take some local action first. Um, I don't think we'll have to design the project, but I think we have to, um, work with, um, either an engineering for, firm or our regional planning agency. So that, that's actually a conversation I had, um, of the town planner, John Charbonneau and I have had with C M R P C is to conduct a traffic analysis and a study of that intersection, but also, uh, Maple and Main. That's another challenging intersection as well.
Equally as bad. At least they, it, it's wide enough so you can pat, you know, they can get people moving, but this is.
So it's gonna take a little bit of, um, kind of effort on our end. Uh, in my report, um, I actually talk about, um, the town just received notification from Mastod, uh, that the state has placed Route one twenty two and Pleasantale intersection, the Four Corners intersection on the tip, which the Palmagussett Road is a, is a tip project. So, um, with some local initiative, we can probably get something addressed. It's gonna take still some years, but first and foremost, I think, um, some technical assistance from C M R P C to get us some data, current data for Mastod and then we just continue to, you know, or is it the squeaker reel gets, gets the grease?
Could we get possibly a letter from the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to, uh, stay, wrap, get, get the ball?
Yeah.
So the squeaky wheel is gonna get the grease, right? So I mean, we could, if we can talk to Kim, talk to it.
But Mastod's already aware, obviously, 'cause I talked to them. Um, interestingly enough about that intersection is for some reason, I think people realize that it's not the greatest intersection, so there's not a lot of traffic incidents or, uh, accidents, uh, reported in the state portal there. Unlike Four Corners where there was a, a higher volume of, so they, that was certainly an intersection where they were more responsive. But, um, I think they already know and realize that it needs to be addressed. So I, I think whether it's, you know, from the select board, um, what has also helped is, um, some advocacy from our local public safety officials. So, uh, for the Four Corners intersection, the, the police chief actually sent a letter to Mastod. So, um, with, you know, messaging from everywhere, I think that it's possible we can get something moving along.
It was interesting, I was, had the occasion to be hiking and hunting down on Shawna Kill Road and I was getting passed by everything. Parked on the side of the road and I'm, I couldn't figure it out. Then everybody's avoiding Palmagussett. And there's trailer trucks going down Shawna Kill Road with car carriers and everything. They're avoiding this road. I mean, now, it, some of it was during construction, I'll grant you that, but it's, it hasn't gotten any better, so.
I think there's been consideration also about trying to force the tra, the tractor trailer truck traffic, especially all the way down sixty eight to the intersection with Main Street and then push it, push them onto Main Street. Um, and we know that that's been a, a challenge through the construction, um, the Shawna Kill construction, the Palmagussett Road construction.
It's definitely, it's, it's gotten worse.
Yeah.
And it's, I don't know if it's, it's the worst it's been in a bunch of years. And, uh, I, uh, the kids all came back to school and, you know, there was a whole bunch of us that lived down there crying every morning, coming up here because it's just.
Possible.
Yeah.
Yeah. One, one of the things, if, if we are fortunate to get a project on the tip, um, one of the things that I think will be critical and I'm speaking from my past experience here is when a project is located on the tip, it takes consistent advocacy too. Because oftentimes and, and I don't know if, uh, Worcester was like this, but the Boston N P O, uh, very much, if you didn't show up, you didn't get funding or they would kick, they, they would push you out. So it really took a lot of people to attend every meeting as much as possible and just reminding them, this is an important project. Um, because it's easy to, to, um, you know, take no action on a project where it doesn't seem like there's any, any support locally. Um, so whether it's local officials showing up, members of the public, um, all of our regulatory boards, obviously our staff. Um, so if we are fortunate to get it on there, I think we can certainly continue to put out messaging, you know, hey, this intersection or this project's on the tip, there's a meeting on Monday, if you can send your letters or correspondence or if you can go to the meeting.
I mean, over the years, we've certainly had some si, very serious accidents, some fatalities here at this intersection, but there hasn't been any. And I don't think people can go fast enough now to get in a serious accident.
I think the most recent was a pedestrian incident, um, but.
But through the chair, if I could say one thing, now that we have those sidewalks there, there're gonna be a lot more kids going up to that center. Cause my daughter goes up now on her bike to go to Dunkin' Donuts now that the sidewalks are there. So it is scary to, you know.
Is there a way we could get the police to, to prevent all the coffee people from parking on Main Street in either direction? Cause now when you're trying to pull out of Palmagussett, you got six or seven people coming down or it's six and seven people coming up. You're trying to get around them and figuring out where they're going. They shouldn't be stopping like that if they can't pull in.
And then the miscellaneous truck is pulled over right there too.
Right.
Cause he can't get, he doesn't wanna do the jog into, in front of the churches, so he's parked on Main Street, so you gotta go, it's.
And I also think the one-way should be changed, uh, in front of the church, in front of this building, going the other direction. It's entering the far side and if you have to go out that end.
Whatever we gotta, we gotta think, we gotta think about something.
We can certainly work on enforcement. We have a lot of enforcement challenges, I know, overall. Every time there's a spring concert at Naquag, I'm fearful. Um, every time there's school pickup, I'm fearful. Um, and we've certainly gotten some reports of it, so work with the chief to work on it.
I'd like to, yeah, whatever we can do, just to start bringing it up because it's, it's not getting any better.
Yeah.
And I haven't been paying attention to planning board, following the, the potential redesign of the Dunkin' Donuts parking area and everything. I was, I didn't think anything had moved forward.
They're still working on design.
Okay. Because that eventually should help alleviate some of that Dunkin' Donuts traffic.
As long as you're not turning from Palmagussett into that parking lot, right? They gotta go down Main Street or in front of the churches and come around or something, but I don't know how we're gonna do it, but.
Right.
There's three or four cars turn, waiting to turn into Dunkin' Donuts and then someone already got the, the car isn't into Dunkin' Donuts. It's just, it's inconvenient and nobody will, and I know coffee is important, I'm one of those guys. But people, right, I mean, people will not stop and let anybody go.
Then you got the gas station.
You got the gas station and God, and God forbid, there's one of the people trying to move the kids across at the same time. You know, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
What are the other considerations? I know that came out through the town center study as well as with, um, the development of the Davis Farm property. Is the speed limit going down the hill there, coming out of the center of town, it's still forty-five? And the last time the town advocated for a speed reduction was over on Mary Paxton and the state actually increased the speed limit over there instead of decreasing it. So to try to have the data to show that there's not currently sidewalks all the way down, but it's significantly developed more so than when that speed limit was set also.
Yeah, we made, Rutland made the news on Saturday night. I think there was a state trooper that got an accident in town. I don't know where that was in town.
Pleasantale.
Pleasantale, okay. He was in accident, he was in town and it made the Boston news on every station. Um, but I don't know, we'll, we'll, maybe we'll start hitting these politicians up and seeing if we can get some help.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
I've also been told by people that, um, they've noticed an uptick on Kenwood Drive, I mean, uh, Glenwood Road rather, and Campbell Street. The amount of traffic that goes through there that way now.
To avoid it? Yeah.
Um, did you say that, um, I know regarding the, the Pleasantale, was there, um, a general like email address that could be used to send, like residents to, to encourage looking at things like that? Or was that more just for like town officials to?
Um, I, so I, I can't recall what was on the letter, but there is a generic, um, email that, that folks can send to, uh, either the Mastod District Three Office or the N P O. So I believe, um, it's placed on the, the, so it's a five-year rolling plan. So whatever year five is right now, it's probably in year five. Um, so once it's play, actually placed on the tip, um, we can certainly put out some correspondence, um, with that email in any way that you can provide your support for the project. Um, but usually it's, you know, it's Worcester N P O or Central Mass N P O at whatever, C M R P C or something, so, but we can get that.
Yeah, just whenever it's available, anybody that can submit something in support of any change.
Just to try, right?
Yeah.
And I, and, you know, the one last discussion is the, uh, Rotary, everybody, you know, or Roundabout, everybody says, oh, those are horrible. But I've seen a lot of them go in and it's not too bad, so.
Popping up all over.
Maybe it's something we gotta look at. You're gonna need a peanut between the two of them.
Yeah.
Absolutely something.
But it's, I mean, I think Sterling did that over on Route twelve, something similar. There's a couple that are very close together. Um, and it slows, it slows traffic down, but it keeps it moving.
Yep.
So, but I think the consideration we will also need to be mindful of is pedestrians. I don't think the ones over in Sterling or even the new one in Princeton at one forty there has the pedestrian traffic that, that these do.
Yeah.
Between school and.
What's I'm saying, with those sidewalks, it's gonna get busy.
Maple Avenue's not gonna get any better. We know that that's gonna get worse in a couple, you know, in, in several years, built out over several years. So it's just a matter of where all that traffic goes and we gotta do it, so if we at least start thinking ahead.
Yeah. Thank you.
While you're on traffic, um, co, a month or so ago, maybe two months ago, I sent you guys a letter, an email about the going down to the Davis Farm area, like Susie Drive. There's thirty-four units there, plus the houses pass there. And the par, the cars park on Main Street going in in Naquag and I watched a, a boy come out of Central Tree, walk down the sidewalk to where it ends, cross between the cars, which is what my husband and I do when we take a walk. We're adults, we're being real careful, but I, I still think something needs to be done there while you're talking about all of this. Um, and when I wrote to you all and like department heads, 'cause I didn't know where to send it, I think it was the police chief told me to write to Mast D O T. So I can get you that address, cause I did write to them and then they send it to somebody to study and that's kinda where it is. So the more people that send something, the better it is. We really should have sidewalks. There's sidewalks going every other way out of town. Maple has them, Palmagussett has them, the other side of Main Street has them. Decide to just end before all the development that's there. So there really should be more sidewalks.
I don't know if you have access to kind of the, the group of residents in, in that neighborhood, but if there's a concerted effort by the residents to kind of show unanimous support also, um, for it is really impactful in addition to, to us, but I know in the past that that's been, um, more impactful in a lot of ways.
What is a tip meeting? What?
Uh, it's the Transportation Improvement Program. So there's, uh, the federal government highway administration, um, allocates billions of dollars to all fifty states, um, for roadway infrastructure projects. Uh, now, most of it, granted, most of it goes to highways and bridges, uh, but there's a certain, um, component that are also is reserved. um, component that are also is reserved for the local, um, regional organizations. So CMRPC, a regional planning agency, they manage, um, what they call the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program for their respective region. Um, so cities and towns can advocate for, um, funding. So, uh, to get those projects done. So typically it, it involves some local investment. You typically have to get to the twenty-five percent design. And then at that point, usually the, um, state with the help of this federal highway funding picks up the rest of the design and the construction. So that was the case with this, uh, with, uh, fifty-six Palmagusset Road project. Took several years of investment and design. Um, and then ultimately was, it became a state project. Um, so that's, that's the tip in short. But, uh, usually it's just roadway infrastructure resurfacing. Uh, in Massachusetts, they love what they call a complete street. So sidewalks, bike lanes, you name it, um, for all kinds of, uh, transit infrastructure. Um, but it, you know, in the case of our typical resurfacing projects, it would be kind of redesigning or resurfacing a, a generic road or intersection improvements like this, so.
And because Main Street is state-owned, we really have to have buy-in from the state. Fifty-six is a state-numbered road, but it's owned by the town, so the town had a little bit more, say, say in that than the Main Street, so it's really the advocacy, um, at the state level to get that moving. There's going to clearly need to be a significant investment from the town side, but nothing, it's not that the town can just go ahead and do stuff without the blessing of the state.
And, um, just to close with that note, um, I mentioned that we had discussions with, uh, CMRPC to begin kind of planning. Uh, CMRPC this year has agreed to conduct traffic analysis on that intersection, the intersection of Main and one twenty-two, um, sixty-eight and Palmagusset and one more, I think Maple and Main. Um, well, actually no, um, Rutland Heights Way and Maple Ave. Um, to see the folks that are coming from Paxton on that way. So, uh, that u- usually takes, they do it during peak time, so they wanna make sure that they're getting the school traffic. Um, they're getting, you know, kind of the, the worst-case scenario for traffic.
You get all these people that are going on Sharnock Hill and we, we need to go back to Palmagusset.
Darren, make that your busiest week of driving.
And close off all the other roads.
Cause the, the most recent, um, for this intersection, the most recent traffic data that we have in the state portal is from twenty-twelve.
It is a lot of cars.
Yeah.
Your, your number that you mentioned to me was huge.
In twenty-twelve, it called for a traffic signal. I can only, I can't even begin to imagine what it looks like now.
Mm-hmm. Which is interesting, cause I'm pretty sure that there have been counters across well since, well after twenty-twelve, within the past few years. But I don't know who had them up and where that data went, like.
Yeah. So we need more, more recent data to, to even begin the process of advocating too, so.
One of the things from MMA this weekend was without data, all you have is an opinion, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think the data's in our favor for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other public comment? Moving into the town administrator update, Austin, that's all you.
Um, thank you. I'll, I'll try to re-brief recognizing we have a joint meeting, um, uh, as the chair mentioned, um, I along with, uh, Ally Mitchell and the chair attended the Mass Municipal Conference. Um, I think it's always a great opportunity to learn from your peers in, in the industry and also, um, new, uh, new folks, see what they're doing, um, and talk with some of the experts in the industry. Um, at the beginning of the conference, Governor Moore Haley and Lieutenant Governor, uh, Kandrisko announced, um, their intentions for the state budget. The state budget will be released on Wednesday. Um, with respect to UGA, which is unrestricted general government aid, um, they have indicated they are budgeting for three percent increase in unrestricted aid. Um, UGA is only one component of our state aid, so I just wanna caution that we're not, we may not be getting a three percent state aid increase, uh, because as, um, everyone here is aware, there's other components to state aid. And in my report, you kind of highlight some of the categories of additional revenue, but also, um, this, the state also charges us for uh, Worcester Regional Transit Authority Service, Air Pollution Service. Um, if you don't pay your fees to RMB, the town ends up paying for it, um, in, in subsequent years. So there's things like that, that we don't know until, um, initial budget, uh, figures are, are presented by, uh, by the state budget and we go through the budget process. So I've included what the past few years have looked like and also what we're budgeting for FY twenty-five based off of the new, uh, three percent UGA numbers. But just wanna caution to everyone that, uh, that there's, you know, some additional considerations there. Uh, the, the project on Miles Road is ongoing. Um, the, um, Stone Culvert has been removed from the rail trail. If you go down there, you notice though that the rail trail is still open. Um, the Conservation Commission and Mass EP have indicated, uh, that the Greenways have to file an NOI, uh, which also includes an analysis to make sure that the culvert that they'll be installing is sufficient. Um, and that will take probably an, another couple of weeks for, uh, that analysis and the NOI and the CONCOM to be able to do their work. Uh, but still hoping within a month or so that that project will be able to continue and be completed. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we received notice from the Mass Dot Project Review Team, uh, with respect to Route one twenty-two and Pleasantale Road intersection. Um, after lots of public feedback from folks, um, the notice indicated that the project is eligible for, for federal funding and may continue through the design process to eventually be included on the tip. Initial project, uh, cost estimates are approximately three million dollars. Um, anyone who knows a, even a thing about project management, this will probably be much more expensive than three million dollar project. Um, uh, finally, as well at the MMA conference, um, Governor Haley, um, had announced they, they are filing a bill titled the Municipal Empowerment Act, which includes a lot of, uh, revisions to master and a lot to provide additional tools for cities and towns. I won't go through all of them. There's a whole packet that's included in my report for the board and the public to consider. You can also go on the state website. Um, there's a lot of things in there, um, you know, reforms to procurement, um, changes to borrowing rules, creating a regional board of assessors, a lot of different things in here, uh, in hopes to provide some flexibility for cities and towns and additional resources. Um, you know, possibly, uh, increasing local revenues, things like that. Um, it just was filed, so it still has to go through the process of being contemplated by the, uh, state legislature, but, um, you know, I think that this is a, a great first start. This is based off of several months of public feedback. Lieutenant Governor kind of did a listening tour across the state, um, with, uh, you know, members of select board, state councils, town administrators, town managers, providing their feedback. So there's a lot of good stuff here, um, and I assume at some point, um, there'll be some additional advocacy from the administration to, to kind of get this moving along. So if you have any questions, um, I would refer everyone to the state website. Um, and just look up the Municipal Empowerment Act, uh, but, uh, some resources are also included in my packet. And as always, my report is included on the town website as well, on the town administrator's page. Um, also within my report, I am, um, and the reason why we have the, the finance committee here as well is just to let folks know that we're, um, pretty much ready to present the budget to you both. Um, we have identified the following dates for a, a joint meeting, um, of the Select Board and Finance Committee for the initial presentation from myself, uh, to both boards. Um, if both boards are available, uh, and this works for you, we've, um, indicated February first as a joint meeting, as a Thursday. Um, if that doesn't work, we can certainly work on some new dates. That would be a joint meeting, uh, of the Select Board and Finance Committee. Um, and then February twelfth would be the beginning of, uh, the budget hearings for the Finance Committee. That is a Monday. Um, if that doesn't work, of course, we can identify some other dates, but hoping to get this process started, Republican part as well. And feedback on those dates.
February first is next week Thursday, I believe.
Yep.
Um, and then February twelfth, is that one of our regular scheduled meetings? I mean, no, it's the off.
But that, that would just, February twelfth would just be Finance Committee meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, I like to generally try to sit in, but also we haven't yet set, um, was that one of the dates still available for Wachusett?
No, Wachusett, all the dates are in March.
Okay, cause I know originally there had been some February dates, but I thought that they got taken and that's mine, so I just wanted to make sure that we were mindful, but it sounds like Wachusett is getting the ball rolling also, so hopefully we'll have some inkling to that sooner rather than later. I think next week on Wednesday is the Wachusett Roundtable, I think, right?
No, that's February twenty-ninth.
Oh, it's twenty, I thought there was something.
They just had something on Saturday for the.
Okay, but I thought that there was something.
There's a chapter seventy-one to.
This week.
This week on twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Yep.
But, um, yeah, then the next one's not till the twentieth.
All right, all right.
November first, that's what we're shooting for. That's a good job.
That's a joint.
And hoping to just make that budget, um, so we can present, uh, obviously the initial preliminary budget to both of you. Um, probably at that point, I would assume that there wouldn't be a lot of questions or comments at that point as it's just being presented to you. And then as we go through the budget hearing process, uh, allowing for questions, feedback, and then ultimately, um, at the Finance Committee public hearings, hoping for a, um, you know, kind of thoughtful exchange of what, uh, what the budget looks like, so. Um, but, uh, initial budget along with the budget book on February first. We'll post it online at RutlandDemi.gov slash finance. If that works for everyone, we can send that out. Um, one final thing for the board, I, in a previous town administrator's report, I, um, had presented a draft um, charge of, for the municipal facilities task force. Um, would like to see if there's any additional feedback and if there's support, um, approve this charge and allow for us to kind of develop, uh, and start recruiting for, uh, individuals to be included on this task force. As you know, this is a select board goal, uh, to begin this process. Um, so the charge is included, is included in the packet. Uh, but essentially taking a look at our facilities, kind of doing a prioritization of the needs, um, and then presenting a plan to the community, select board, uh, CIPC, Pingcom, ultimately town meeting. Um, this, this draft, uh, charge includes seven members, including one from the select board, um, CIPC, and then five at large, and, uh, myself and other town employees will serve in an ex officio capacity. Um, so if there's no additional comments or questions, would like to see if we can get this committee started.
I, Austin, thank you so much for putting this together. Um, I meant to email, my only consideration, question is, is there a way to kind of guide so that it's not just kind of right size for where we are right now, but also looking to the future, especially when it's looking at renovation and or building new, new structures. Um, renovation is more, is kind of rearrangement of space or something.
Yeah.
Um, because I feel like sometimes we get stuck in this is what we need right now, and then it's completed in five years and we're, we've already outgrown it and it's nowhere near where we need to be in twenty years. Um, so I didn't.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, we can certainly, we can certainly make some modifications to make it a little bit more explicit, but, um, you know, bullet number eight, um, regarding any plans, approaches to address current and future needs. Um, every space needs analysis starts with where are you now and where do you think you're going, population staffing-wise, so. Um, certainly, I think as we kind of go through that process, I think that would be a part of the conversation. But I think that's also probably why it's important to have the planning committees included, select board, CIPC, um, incorporating that also and, and I, you know, I wanted to make sure we put in like the master plan, for example. Um, that speaks to a lot of the, the future needs for the town, so, um, you know, worst thing you could do is, I've said many times, is take a plan and put it on the shelf. Hopefully this task force can really engage some of the work of that. I know it's still a draft master plan, but, um, hopefully there's not too many substantive changes to that. Um, because we can use that, um, in this work and the budget and everything else too.
No, I just wanted to kind of highlight that a little bit, cause I know, uh, the previous kind of facility study that was done was just kind of the current, current use and current space and not anything forward-looking, and so I just wanted to make sure that if we're putting people in place to do, spend the time and effort and eventually money, that we're, we're doing something a little bit more comprehensive than what we're using space for right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Does the board have any other?
Do you care?
Sure.
Um, when I look at this, I'm looking at this as kind of a long-term type of task force. Is there any, um, any thought as to, as you go on in years with this thing? Who's gonna be replaced? How do you replace? How do you put new members on?
Yeah, so, um, candidly, I wasn't thinking of this as, as a committee, but, but, but again, more so, I, I think I named it as a task force. So as, you know, I think our first charge would be, what's the immediate priority? Um, so let's just say, for example, let's, and I'm gonna say an extreme example, let's say it's the pump stations, our sewer pump stations. Now, why not the sewer pump stations?
Yeah.
But if, as the committee does its work, does its research, looks into this and says, you know, the sewer pump stations are number one priority, they present their recommendation to the board and the community, and something gets done, then I think we go back to the task, to the, uh, select board and they say, what's next? Um, so kind of as we work along, and certainly I think this will be a committee that doesn't go away. Task force that doesn't go away.
Right.
Like CIPC and some of our other planning committees, because we're always gonna have to address facilities, even the brand-new ones that are shiny. Um, but the point is just every year, I'm constantly talking about these. So this doesn't have terms on it.
Um, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Cause somebody reading this might think, I guess they're gonna be permanent, then how do they get off this thing?
Um, you know, certainly, if, if the board would like to, um, include terms on here, um, but, you know, I think that naturally through time, like with some of our other indefinite committees, um, you know, some people may, their, their pet project is the DPW building, and when that gets done, they may step away. Um, or the senior center or something else, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not advocating, I was just curious, cause.
I mean, the typical one is three. If you wanna put in terms of three years, that may be something that we can.
I, I mean, to me, it's premature. I'm just asking you because I don't think it's been fully developed yet as to how, you know, or why, so I'm curious.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, I kind of view it as more almost like the ad hoc bylaw committee in that it's almost like an indefinite ongoing charge. And we've had fluctuations on that committee. Um, people have had to step down for a variety of reasons and then other people have, have stepped in and, and everything, so I see it more as a, a little bit of an, of a flow than a defined.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at least currently, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, and, and, Katie, I think a lot of the work is hopefully gonna be in the field, looking and being, you know, in the buildings, really looking at, um, boiler rooms for each building and, and, um, so I can't imagine that there'll be a lot of things, I'm sorry, Paul. Probably not a lot that's televised, um, but hopefully, you know, kind of getting out there and, and doing a lot of work in the field and providing their analysis and expertise, so. And certainly I think there's a lot of very qualified people in the community that could be very helpful on this effort, so.
So what do you need from us? Motion or is it just a?
If there's any, um, if there's any revisions, um, include those, but ultimately just to approve this charge for the task force.
Um, does this give you flexibility, if we say go ahead with this, does this give you flexibility to change one of the eight?
Yeah.
Or add to it for part of the charge?
Absolutely, and it, and certainly if, if we need to do that efficiently, we can always go back to a meeting and revise a charge.
Okay.
Um, but hopefully this starts the practice of formally adopting a charge, posting it so it's clear for everyone. Um, so when people ask you what's that task force doing, they'll have a, some documents associated with it too, so.
I make a motion to approve the town administrator's ability to start forming a municipal facilities task force, as written.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Any additional conversation? Austin, thank you for the time and thoughtfulness in, in putting this together and seeing it through also. I will take a roll call vote. Harry?
Second and I.
Matt's an I.
What was your I?
Yeah, what?
Whitman I. Um, moving into old business, we have.
Um, could I just have another question for the town administrator, please?
Oh, sure. Oh, sorry, Austin, were you finna, yes. Oh, sure, oh, sorry, Austin, were you finna, yes.
We talked about the budget. I've been approached by several people in the town as to. Some more students or applicants at Deveraux that will be using our school system. I think the number that was mentioned to me was about nineteen. Has that been factored into our budget, or is that a reality, or what's the status up there? Have you talked with Deveraux about that?
So what I took a tour of Deveraux months ago, and one of the questions I had actually rose from. Uh a question that came from a finance committee meeting was who pays for Deveraux students? And the the answer is complicated, it it depends on where the Deveraux students come from. If they're coming from Rutland, we're responsible for. The school assessment to Wachusett or wherever they go, if they're coming from Jamaica Plain. So it's their sending community that's responsible for it, so so. The answer is no, because I don't know where those nineteen students are coming from. Um but I think in our communications with the school district, as we work through the budget. Um we'd have to get some clarification on what those figures and whatever it looks like, but I would have. I would suspect that not a lot of those nineteen students are from Rutland.
I, that's where I was led to believe, they're not from anywhere, so who pays?
Good question, well, I mean, so if we're talking about the thing that everyone's talking about, there's a lot of questions about who's paying for what.
That could be a hundred thousand dollars to the town.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah. Are they attending the Wachusett School District?
I don't know, I was just, I that's why I'm saying, Ken, is there a way you can talk to Deveraux?
I could try to find out, but yeah, but generally, so you know, because they do have a lot of um you know, students that come from other communities. Uh the split is actually um it's not math health, mass health, it's the what's the other agency that deals with developmental care?
Services.
Child, yes, um.
Oh, D C.
No, it's not D C F.
No.
It's like a, you know what I'm talking about, Karen.
Medicaid, Medicaid.
Yeah, so it's split fifty percent from A K, whatever the state agency that's responsible for that, and their sending community.
So.
But what happens if those students are from out of state?
Exactly, or not from out of state at all.
I don't know.
Because the communities that they come from only send what it costs them, they don't have to pay the full boat of what it costs to go to Wachusett.
Yeah, you're talking you're talking about out of s- out of s- out of school choice tuition, out of district tuition. Um yeah, I I don't know what it's within its respect to out of state, um so you're talking like if a New Hampshire student or.
Yeah, or even out of, like if, like you said, Jamaica Plain, what what they pay to Wachusett isn't necessarily what it really costs to go to Wachusett.
Well, uh well, no, that's not true, they um. So so that is often a huge expense for cities and towns out of district. Um that's why, for example, a lot of communities are trying to manage and make sure that their students are staying in district, because the costs are exorbitant. Um with their school assessments, and unfortunately, there's always a lag there with. Students that are attending Wachusett, or if we have students that are attending Worcester or, you know, another school district. Um but you know, that's a good question about if they're out of state. Um because I don't know if there is a really good way to track. Um and go after, for example, our Rhode Island community if their students are attending. Deveraux here in Rutland, so I I the point is, it's clear that there's some questions here, so I can answer, I can find out some information for the both of you and.
Well, the reason I ask is I understand that they were placed there by the state.
Yeah.
So that's not an out of state issue, that's an in-state issue that they were placed there by the state.
To give you an indication how much of a challenge this is for cities and towns, and this isn't just related to education. Uh there's communities that are losing out on rooms taxes. Because of families that have been placed in. These shelters or hotels.
Right.
Um and they're not paying the rooms tax that is owed to uh to them locally, so. There's a lot of challenges, I know the state is spending a lot of money each month on this issue, um and at some point it is affecting, so. If we do realize, so if if all nineteen, for example, that is a significant um impact to Rutland, so I think we'd have to do some. Advocacy to our state delegation to it.
The the Deveraux the. Must realize a benefit, they get something for the nineteen students. Somehow, we gotta have some sort of a formal assessment to them for that nineteen students. I I I understand what you're saying, but we gotta get there.
I know.
With their donation that covers a cruiser every couple of years, we gotta be bigger. Whatever they've got, we gotta like, come on, they're they're realizing a benefit on the front side for doing this. They're not doing it for free.
We need a hundred thousand dollar cruiser next donation, how about that?
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's a little bit more than that, but go for, go for.
I could get some, I I'll get some clarification to some of these questions and send it out to you.
I just, I think it's unfair that they get a benefit, Deveraux, and then we get burned with it. It's like a uh all the things the state does with, they don't pay their taxes and all that, just another benefit we get from the state, right?
Yeah, they own forty percent of land in Rutland, you pay a hundred thousand dollars. It's a good deal.
It's a good deal.
That that's a good question, though, thank you, Harry.
Austin, are you finished with your?
I'm good.
Um if the board's amenable, can we take the joint business with FinCom out of order so that that way we can um. If they wanna stick around, by all means, they're welcome to, but it's already seven o'clock and.
I have no objection.
Ken, I just wanted to make one comment, same thing Darren was just saying with to Austin, was just talking about. Obviously, Deveraux is getting paid for every student that's there, and they're not getting paid a low amount, I'm sure. So where they don't pay any taxes, there's gotta be some way that they should be able to support whatever the cost side through a fee or through. Additional. Fees that they would charge to do this in some shape or form.
Yeah, it's a, it's a point that every commi- I mean, Worcester is having a huge conversation right now about all of their universities. You know, the city, for example, feels that. The amount that's being paid in term of a pilot agreement is not sufficient, so I I don't think it's a. Question that's just exclusive to Rutland, certainly, I think we can try to see if we can negotiate something a little bit stronger. Um but like with any negotiation, you know, what are they gonna ask for, right? So we gotta be a little bit more strategic about that before we kind of say, you know, hey, Deveraux, pay up, so.
And I think also understanding how many students are ending up in Wachusett.
Right.
Um because.
But I mean, the the so, I mean, the 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 point that every city in town is making is. You know, even if it's not just an impact to the Wachusett School District, how many EMS calls do we have there? Um I know one of the challenges that we have is um oftentimes with students that are attending. Um special institutions or facilities like Deveraux. Um if there's an ambulance call, oftentimes, there's not a medical provider or insurance. Um so there's, you know, resources that are being spent by the town, and we're not making the ambulance revenue back. Or how many times are the police department responding, um so we have to take all that into account um in our discussions with.
No, the fire department has a software package that they do go out of. Uh for out of state to try to get to try to get some of that money back so that we don't have to pay the full bore of that.
What if they're not from a country and have nothing?
Well, yeah, you're right, I get that.
That's one of the challenges that we're having right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So moving on, if we can move down to um under s- new and special business, we'll start with a special town meeting warrant. Um this is uh to sign and make recommendations on the articles. Uh this is one of the joint meeting actions with FinCom. FinCom, you are open, right Darren, I think open, so you guys are all set. Um Peter, I think, has provided some updated warrant articles. Um those were the ones that were provided to us, did FinCom get the most updated ones also?
Austin gave them yes.
Okay. Um Peter, did you wanna speak to anything, or?
Um I'll speak very briefly to the changes to Article One first, obviously. Um after conversations with council, we are not making the schedule of fines formal bylaw. It will instead be policy effectively of the select board, so the select board will need to adopt the schedule of fines as the. Schedule of fines for the town. After everything's adopted, we don't need to do it now or even anytime soon, it's around the time that it becomes effective that we'll that you'll need to take that action, but. That's. Yeah, that's that's the the substance of the change, I will also note that there are. Other changes coming to the explanation, because I realized I never really. Did a fine reading of the explanation, so I'll need to tweak that as well, but that's not formally part of the article, Austin and I have already had this conversation, so we'll be able to. To adjust the explanation language. After your vote, oh, to- tomorrow, say.
And um the ad hoc bylaw committee is putting forth three articles um for the general bylaws. And then Planning Board is sponsoring uh an additional three articles for the zoning bylaws, which. The select board had already seen and recommended moving forward with um for through their public information session process. So Article One uh is to see if the town will vote as part of a comprehensive review. Renumering and reorganization of the general bylaws of the town of Rutland to amend the following sections, general provisions, membership requirement. Town meetings, town officers' powers of selectmen, and Board of Public Works, further in connection therewiths. Therewith, to adopt the proposed town administrator bylaw and to repeal the non-criminal disposition bylaw. All is set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee Article One, or take any action in relation thereto. Is there a? Select board recommendation? Um or con- does select board FinCom wanna have conversation about it, I think in the past, we voted to place. Um at the same time, but kind of one after the other.
Madam Chair, if I may suggest.
Yep.
I suggest you go through the placement, the formal placement vote first, and then, because it's placed, you can take a recommendation vote, as can FinCom.
So then I would, from the select board, I would ma- entertain a motion to vote to place the articles as presented. Does the board have any conversation about the placement of the articles put forth before us?
Question?
Yep.
Peter, these are kind of in keeping with what we went through, looking at all the bylaws, the particular sections, in the way you're presenting them here.
That is correct.
Okay.
The ad hoc bylaw committee didn't formally present the schedule of fines, because as I said, that's already being pulled off, the bylaw. That we did review that has been pulled is the door to door solicitation and peddling, we're staying with the current version. Uh so that that doesn't go through Attorney General review. Uh and because of that, we are not going to move to repeal the fingerprint based criminal record background checks by law. So those are gonna stay exactly as they are today.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, question, in Article Two, it says, uh it lists earthworks board, and I thought that that was one that also was being held. Per town council, is that?
No, the earthworks board is is going to be amended, the earth removal bylaw is not being amended.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Question, two questions. Is the town council reviewed all these changes? And they approve everything, they're good with everything, and they're not have changed it.
We are waiting for feedback on water use restrictions, public consumption of intoxicating substances.
And we'll have that before the town meeting?
Oh, yes, absolutely, I'm I'm.
I talked to Dave and Lauren this weekend, and they're, it's a big priority for them to get through our bylaws for.
So when I go to the town meeting on the fifteenth in February. Am I getting a package of each individual, am I just getting, I'm, am I voting on Article One, but I don't know all the what I'm voting on? Oh, what what exactly, there's a hundred and fifty eight pages of bylaw changes. Hundred and fifty two, sorry, Karen, I wish I was as good as you.
Depends on which version.
Well, but but are we, what are we gonna give? The townspeople at the meeting so that they know what they're voting on? Are we giving them a hundred and fifty two pages?
No, the intent is to hand the consequential changes document, which is about ten pages long, which. Does not list every single change, it instead talks about the changes. That are made that are consequential, as to say that impact the effect or um.
Intent and meaning.
Right, the 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 meaning, the intent, or the scope of the bylaw, any of those changes are documented in those ten pages. Everything else is going to be. Insertion of paragraphs, word choice changes, punctuation changes, things that it's not worthwhile listing individually, in our opinion.
I know O'Malley's. Haven't been around as long as some people yet, but I've never had a bylaw change in the town of Rutland in my time that we didn't know exactly what we were doing.
The bylaws are published on the website, the byl- the full bylaw package will be available from the town clerk and on the website. And we're not, if somebody's going to come to town meeting and expect to be able to read. A hundred fifty some odd, whatever the number turns out to be, pages. At or before the meeting, when after they've received it, that's not practical, it's not sensible.
If, through the chair, if I may, I think that's also what the uh education sessions are for, leading up to the town meeting.
And I think, I I I know as select board, we've held multiple meetings that are on YouTube and available. Um multiple individual meetings, as well as portions of our regular meeting where we've gone through them, um had dialogue back and forth and everything. Um my my sincere hope is that we can come forward as a consensus building group and kind of say, are these one hundred percent perfect? No, but is anything one hundred percent perfect? No, because anytime you have an issue, then it you realize where that hole or gap is, we are. Hopefully, tonight, voting to create a bylaw, a permanent bylaw committee. That will review them periodically and to cons- and have an avenue for uh resident um feedback. Through which they can review and move forward with also. Um.
Okay.
So that's, I think, my sincere hope, I think that was kind of the the consensus of this this select board as we were going through them, there were things that. I didn't necessarily agree with, there were things that Jen and Harry and Paul and Tom didn't necessarily agree with one hundred percent, but they're. In a much better state than what they were, and we felt that it was in the best interest of town and the six plus years of time and effort. From the ad hoc bylaw committee to get them before town.
So my question is, if John Q. Public stands up at the town meeting on the fifteenth. And says, I don't like page one hundred, section three, do this, we're gonna amend it on the floor. And we're gonna go through it, or are you hoping that we, the town whole takes the whole body and goes through it? Because if if I don't like a s- if someone doesn't like something, we could be there for days. I and I. I'm not against it, I'm just saying, I I could see bad things happening.
I I, if I may, I I I know I have an issue with, you, we've got so many bylaws, I don't know how many. And we've got three articles for them, so it's either a take it or leave it.
I think uh some of it is that for some of them, taking them, if one portion of that section doesn't go through, then it kind of. Makes the rest of that section null and void, we need a a group of them to go through, whether from general, the general functioning of government, that. Kind of group needs to go through in order to have a functioning government, and that, I think, Peter, correct me if I'm miss- misspeaking. But I think that that was a lot of the rationale, is trying to package them as to this, the ones in this article. Go through and we can have a functioning government, the ones in this article. Don't go through, we're not losing out on something else, and my.
That's fundamentally correct, yes, and and in fact, based on discussions I have had. I don't believe there is controversy in Articles Two or Three, I think all the controversy that's going to happen. Is most likely in Article One, town meeting always surprises us, that's not a question either, something will, someone will object to something somewhere else, but. Our expectation is that the bylaws as a whole, especially. our expectation is that the bylaws as a whole, especially Article Three, can just go because there won't be a lot of discussion about individual bylaws and that. We expect. Darren, we did have, there was a significant amount of discussion at yesterday's meeting specifically about amending on the floor. Absolutely possible. It can happen. Our hope is that it doesn't happen. And or doesn't happen a lot.
So it just, it just, it scares me the death possibility could come up. We could be.
It's gonna come up.
And and someone mentioned it like this. This is Rollin's version of that twenty thousand-page state budget. You know what I'm saying? That you can't really check everything. Now, anybody that is interested in the town can read through it, go to one of his meetings, the information meetings, look it up on the website. There's plenty of ways, but there's gonna be somebody there that's gonna be offended by this.
Sure.
And it could be a long, long, drawn-out meeting. And the moderator can't just gavel them with their plate.
I mean, I agree with that. I wouldn't even say offended. There's gonna be someone there that's looking for trouble. That's what it's gonna be. And you're right.
And the and the.
But i- if I may, Daryl, the the, Darren, the, that is true whether there are three articles or thirty-five. The same is true irrespective of that.
Right.
But.
Yes. This is how you govern our town. That what we're doing is we're changing some of the ways we govern our town.
Excuse me, but that is not correct. We are not changing the way we're governing. We are changing the way that we are describing it. We're describing it in the way that we are actually governing, as opposed to what's in the bylaws today. This is a really important point, and I probably didn't drive that at all home yesterday. But we are not we are changing bylaws, we are not changing the town behavior. We are not changing the town processes, we are not changing any of that. We are changing only how we are describing it to ensure that what is in the law is how we behave.
I think that what these we have a, I respect everybody that did this. I am gonna support him, but we are changing things in here. However you want a a dollar or a hundred cents, it's still things will change after this is done. The way the town is governed will change. Your rules are changed, our rules are changed, every committee in town, the rules are going to change. So, yes, he's right in the fact that he's putting it on paper and it's the way it is, but things are going to change. That's my point. I'm not against it, I'm just saying, this is a big pill to swallow, guys, and I hope it, I I hope it goes well.
I think it, I I think it's, what's hard is that this is how I I think this is kind of how town has been functioning in the past, especially the past couple of years, the past few years. Um we, when the town administrator position was created, this work probably should have been done, and it wasn't. And a lot of our struggles have been because we don't have any clear, clear roles and responsibilities laid out in a bylaw. So we've been kind of going, what, how have things were, been working through the past? We've had a town administrator for what, nine years, I think? The position has been created for nine years, uh funded for nine years? So how has that been happening through the past nine years? And looking at current practices in in throughout the state of Massachusetts and what roles and responsibilities a town administrator has, what roles and responsibilities a select board has, what roles and responsibilities a FinCom has. We've looked at that and the past few years have been moving more and more towards the way communities of our size and growing communities are are operating. And so we're just trying to to document that this is how things go. And again, I'm sure that that we've seen it with some of the zoning bylaws, right? That there, as we get through them, that there needs to be clarifications or or fixes or changes. And that's the purpose of having, creating the bylaw, the permanent bylaw committee, to have that avenue for that. Also, we hopefully will be working towards a charter, um which we're not there yet, but that's going to provide another opportunity for additional town feedback and input is to to the governance of of town as well. So, I I hear you, Darren, and I think it's scary because change is scary and change is hard, and I don't think that this is actually a lot of major, major changes to the, how things have been operating the past few years. It hopefully will clarify some of those power struggles and roles and responsibilities.
This definition, it clarifies everything, but I think that there's gonna I think Tom and I agree that there's gonna be somebody there that's gonna scare you. You gotta pack a lunch, because it's gonna be a long night.
You know, after some of these bylaws have not been revised for sixty years, so we're gonna get some questions. I think what you're saying is true. There will be some people there who would still desire to drive a nineteen fifty-two Plymouth instead of a new car today, even though the new car is safer and better for everybody.
Correct.
It's gonna happen.
So I, I hear you.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, hang on.
I know. I know.
Okay, I'm good.
Sort of towards that, to say what Harry said a little differently. This whole thing is coming up because this town has neglected its bylaws for eighty years. That's why we're, and so we have people who are willing, who have put the time in to do the work. And I agree that there is the possibility of chaos at best. It could get, it could devolve horribly. My hope is that with the information sessions, that most of the questions will be answered, and a lot of the uncertainty will be hopefully set aside enough so the town meeting is not a mess.
Okay.
Mine does it too. Apparently it's defrosting.
That's fresh.
Um, so I I appreciate the dialogue and the and the conversation, because I think we've struggled with the best way to present them and have a a warrant of fifty articles that are still going to create the same amount of conversation, or a warrant of three general bylaw articles that are still provide the opportunity for for the same amount of conversation, but that are concise, more concise. So I, I hear it and all we can do is hang on for the ride.
Think I'm gonna have a cold with that night.
So, um, for our board, is the board amenable to placing the six, um, basically placing the warrant as presented with the six articles? Three, three of them, um, as I mentioned, Articles Four, Five, and Six are the ones that we have seen that went through planning board um in that process. And then One, Two, and Three are the the ad hoc bylaw committee recommended, recommended general bylaws.
Um, I'm gonna ask just a question. If if we are potentially anticipating more discussion or controversy over the um
Like Article One?
One, Two, and Three, like, would it be better to put the planning board first to get through those? I I'm just thinking if it does spill over, like, what happens if we decide we can't finish in one town meeting?
Like.
Does it matter?
It actually doesn't matter. We continue town meeting to uh date as somebody determines, and it's still
Okay.
The the date of the start of the first session of town meeting is the one that counts, in terms of the date.
Okay. Right.
You should feel the same pain as us.
So, if the board is amenable, I would take a motion to place the warrant articles as presented.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to place Articles One, Two, and Three for the town meeting as presented.
Uh what about Four, Five, and Six?
Go through my place, okay.
All of them?
I would like, then I make a motion.
I I was gonna say, I think Tom, I think Tom moved it, right?
I just. Yeah.
Oh, do you mind seconding Harry? Tom, Tom.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I just wanna go through these, that's all, no problem.
So we have a motion to place as presented in a second?
Yes.
Um, is there any conversation questions? We've heard kind of the the concerns, which I think we all share, but we share no matter what, so. Um, hearing none, Harry, roll call.
Secman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Whitman, aye. So now we'll move into the recommendations. Um, Article One is to see if the town will vote as part of a comprehensive review, renumbering and reorganization of the general bylaws of the town of Rutland to amend the following section. General provisions, membership requirement, town meetings, town officers, powers of selectmen, and Board of Public Works. Further, in connection therewith, to adopt the proposed town administrator bylaw and to repeal the noncriminal disposition bylaw. All is set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee Article One, or take any action in relation thereto. Questions, comments, concerns from s- select board on this? I would make a, I would take a motion to recommend favorable action on these, on this article.
Make a motion to recommend, uh, make a motion for favorable action on Ar- Article One.
Motion is there a second?
Second the motion.
Paul's second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Secman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Somebody wanna make a motion as well? From the Finance Committee?
Make a motion, we vote favorably, favorable action on this article. Is that the best way to say it?
It's fine. In a second? I second.
Thank you.
Open for discussion, comments, questions? Tom?
The only thing I would wanted to say was, I think that the motion should include that um recommend favorable based on the uh actions and recommendations of the ad hoc committee and the fact that we've been told that town council has said all of these are acceptable. And we should be presented for the townspeople to review, because at this point in time, we haven't even been through the full information session, and as far as I know, we've gone over our section of it, and we've been over the general gist of it, but I don't know of any, have every, has all of us been through the whole thing yet?
Karen has.
Well, I've read.
Don't worry, my actions will be typed in duplicate, ready to go.
I, that's just my two, I think that should be in the motion with it.
Um, to, if I may, um, so to kind of assuage your concerns, Tommy, we would never bring forth a warrant that wasn't already approved by town council. Uh, and if you notice at the top, each article's sponsor i- in this particular case, the ad hoc bylaw committee, so we're recognizing that this is based on what they have submitted. Um, but are you asking for that verbiage to be on the warrant? Because usually it's just the, just the recommendation.
That's, I'm saying that's from our committee in in our recommendation. Because the first thing that happens is somebody stands up and says, not every time, why did you recommend it? Or especially if you'd said, if we had said, we don't recommend it, why don't you recommend? Our job is to be looking out for the townspeople's benefit by whatever happens on a town, on a warrant. That's what we's, that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Wait, and I understand what you're saying.
I do not have a full feeling of all of these changes being done, because I only sat in the session yesterday and we got partway through it.
I- if I may, I th- I, I think there's information, information sessions should have been held before we even got to this point, to present it to the town.
Timing didn't work out that way.
We had years. A- and I appreciate all the work that the board has done. I do.
I think part of the struggle has been in the past, having informa- there had been information sessions in the past, and then it turns into this vicious cycle of part of the reason that we've had years and different boards have seen the same iteration of the same bylaws is because it's been a vicious cycle of nobody wanting to just basically say, are they going to be absolutely one hundred percent perfect for every individual person in this town to make them happy? Probably not. And are we at consensus that these are wholly better than what they were and provide a very good foundation to move forward with what we have? Yes. And so I think that that's part of the reason for not having these before, because i- it very much became a, everybody's going to voice what they want, and there's not a consensus based on the people that are showing up in the meeting. And so it was the 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 committee, the ad hoc bylaw committee, reached out to all of the boards and commissions, departments that were impacted by these changes, to have the conversations about those, and then select board took them, had very detailed conversations about them um back and forth, and reached consensus that this was um at a point to move forward.
My motion to the Finance Committee was to recommend favorable action on this article.
We got a second.
We got a second.
That's for full.
Okay, uh, all in favor of recommending favorable action on Article One? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, those pose?
Yay.
Three, Three and Two.
I think Lynn said yes.
No, I said, I said, she said yes.
Okay, I thought you said yes to the negative.
I should just have to take the minute.
No, I I I still think it should have been presented ahead of time, but.
And I I do hear your frustration, Lynn, and I think I, some of it I feel also, and I also am on the side of, for six years, we've been doing this, and it hasn't been getting anywhere. So it was, this board felt that it was a priority to to stop going back to legal with the same set of of bylaws and really sit down and just I I did hear your, sorry. Article Two is to see if the town will vote as part of a comprehensive review, renumbering and reorganization of the general bylaws of the town of Rutland to amend the following sections. Accounting and Collecting, Finance Committee, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Legal Affairs, Licenses and Permits of Delinquent Taxpayers, Public Drinking, Unregistered Motor Vehicles, Agricultural Commission, Bylaw Committee, Council on Aging and Earthworks Board, and to adopt the Accountant bylaw. All is set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee Article Two, or take any action in relation thereto. I would entertain a motion to recommend favorable action on this article.
I'll make a motion to vote favorable on Article Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there questions, comments, or concerns from select board? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Secman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Can we get a uh motion on recommendation?
I'll make a motion to the Finance, recommend favorable action on this article.
I will second. Open for discussion? Um, let's do a roll call, starting at Tommy then. Tom?
Rashala, aye.
Winika, aye. Narwhal, nay.
Ross, aye.
Mo, aye.
Article Three is to see if the town will vote as part of a comprehensive comprehensive review, renumbering and reorganization of the general bylaws of the town of Rutland to amend the following sections. Highways, scenic roads, permits, permit for entering highway, bylaw to establish official names for streets, bylaw to establish a uniform system of numbering houses and other structures, stormwater management, water use restriction, animal control bylaw, master key, security boxes, rights to farm bylaw, and stretch energy code as set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled Ad Hoc Bylaw Committee Article Three, or take any action in relation thereto. I would take a motion to recommend favorable action on this from the select board.
Make a motion to vote favorable on Article Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Secman, aye.
Mattson, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Whitman, aye.
I would recommend that the Finance Committee will recommend favorable action on this. Or make a motion, a motion, excuse me.
I will second. Discussion, comments, questions? Uh, roll call starting at Tommy again, please.
Rashala, aye.
Winika, aye. Narwhal, nay.
Ross, aye.
Mo, aye.
Moving on to Article Four, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Rutland. Article One, Section Five, definitions. Article Three, Section Eight, Resident District, Residents Dist- Three, section eight, resident dis- residence district, article three, section ten A, village center, VC district. Article three, section ten B, town center TC district, article three, section eleven A, light industrial office, LIO. And article four, or article three eleven B, light industrial. To change kind of regulations, all is set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled planning board. Article four, or take any action in relation thereto. This would require a two thirds vote because it's a zoning bylaw. I would rec- I would entertain a motion to recommend favorable action on this article.
Make a motion to vote favorable on article four.
Is there a second? John's second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Roger I.
Yeah, I'm I.
Whitman I.
I'd like to make a motion that the finance committee recommend favorable action on article four.
I'm sorry, who's, was that Karen or Lynn?
Any comments, questions, discussion? Uh, roll call starting with Tommy please?
Rashala, I.
Winika, I. Norwold, I.
Ross, I.
Mo would I.
Article five, sponsor the planning board to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Rutland. Article thirteen, section ninety-five, development rate limitation by law exemptions to delete item E in its entirety. And to renumber the remaining items accordingly as set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled planning board article five. Or take any action in relation thereto. Again, this is a two thirds vote because it's a zoning by law. I would entertain a motion to recommend favorable action on this article.
Make a motion to vote favorable on article five.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Uh, motion ha- in a second? Any questions, comments, concerns, uh, discussion? Hearing none, roll ca- uh, roll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Roger I.
Yeah, I'm I.
Whitman I.
Need to make a motion that the finance committee recommend favorable action on article five.
Second.
Any questions, conversations? Roll call starting with Tommy again please?
Rashala, I.
Winika, I. Norwold, I.
Ross, I.
Mo would I.
And article six, sponsor the planning board to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Rutland. Article nine, administration enforcement to add a new section sixty-four entitled associate planning board member. To allow for the addition of an associate planning board member and to establish procedure for appointment and to regulate other aspects of the position. All is set forth in more detail in the document on file with the town clerk entitled planning board article six, or take any action in relation thereto. This also is a two thirds vote as this is zoning by law change. I would entertain a motion to recommend favorable action on this article.
I make motion to vote favorable on article six.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second? Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Yeah, I'm I.
Whitman I.
I would like to make a motion that the finance committee recommend favorable action on article six.
Second.
Comments, questions, discussion? Roll call starting with Tommy please?
Rashala, I.
Winika, I. Norwold, I.
Ross, I.
Mo would I.
Thank you. So then I would take a motion to s- for the select board to sign. Um, the warrant as discussed with recommendations, uh, voted tonight.
Take a motion to sign the warrant for February twenty-fourth. Meeting with the discussed changes to articles.
Second.
Second, is there?
Yeah, just um, Peter had mentioned the possibility of changing the explanations, can we still sign if those are gonna be? Oh, the back sign is, page is okay, okay.
Back and add if everybody's recommendations as well before we print the final document to give to Anita.
Okay, alright, yeah, just like. Got stuff on the paper, so needs to be changed.
Uh, we have a motion and a second? Harry roll call.
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Roger I.
Yeah, I'm I.
Whitman I. Um, I think the other item for discussion with FinCom tonight is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Budget meeting with Wachusett Regional School District. Um, I think Randy and Tamika sent out the most updated uh. Potential dates, um, and as of, I think. One forty-six this afternoon, it looks like it was Thursday, March fourteenth, Tuesday, March ninth, Wednesday, March twentieth, or Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. For uh, this would be the joint meeting with Wachusett and FinCom, um, and generally select board is there as well, so um. I don't know for our board if there's any considerations. Um, it's Tuesday, Thursday, or two Wednesday, a Thursday, a Tuesday, or two Wednesdays.
Sorry, can you say those dates?
Thursday, March fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Tuesday, March nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Wednesday, March twentieth. Wednesday, March twenty-seventh.
We just gotta figure out one night, right?
Yep. And I think the, historically, generally, it's been kind of FinCom has been the driver on these meetings, I think. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, and select board usually is in attendance as best as our, our capabilities. We've not yet heard from Bay Path for a date, correct?
Correct.
We generally try to do them, I think, on the same night if possible, is that, am I remembering correctly from FinCom's perspective?
We have, and if we have, um, once you guys choose a date, I'm happy to reach out to them to see if they're amenable to that date as well.
Well, usually it's a small car and we don't drive too fast, so we get with others one, so. I have a question.
Yeah.
Do we know when the, the full school committee votes on the budget?
I think it's the. Um, so I know on the end, at the end of February, the twenty-ninth, I think, is the, the. Presentation from the district to the towns th- as a whole, um, and these are the general. I know, I don't know for sure, is my short answer. They had a budget meeting uh, this past weekend, I think, um, the school committee. Um, I'm not sure when, what their agenda is for the up- their upcoming meetings. As to when, do you have, no, Austin, sorry?
Um, so they'll have a business and finance meeting that we're uh, also discussing that. Think a representative from FinCom and select board will attend on Thursday, February twenty-ninth. There'll be a public hearing on March seventh to approve the budget. Um, and if it doesn't uh, get approved on March seventh, there's another meeting on March twelfth for a final vote on the budget.
So that puts us in the same position we're normally in, because they come to present the budget to us, we talk to them about it, we make suggestions and comments. We don't get answers back, they vote on the budget the way they want anyway, so. If they're gonna vote on the budget by then, so it's just a presentation to us, really, it's not any kind of a discussion. That's my only point. That's why I said the ki- the kai doesn't got a first gear very much.
Uh, certainly, there's a challenge with timing on the regional school district budget, that's all I'll say.
Well, it's gonna get approved on the twelfth at the latest and then we're not gonna meet until the fourteenth, so it's obviously. There's no question that it's gonna be a presentation and not a conversation.
In the second part of what I wanted to say was, we, we don't seem to. Sometimes the school committee has come in, but we don't, I don't know if you guys talked to the school committee, we don't get a chance to talk to the school committee to present. What's, the budget's gonna look like or what the outlook looks like.
Well, part of that will occur on, on February twenty-ninth, I think, was it Lynn? Um, the FinCom and, uh, is it Julia?
Yeah.
And myself, uh, Jenny come to. Presenting the draft budget to um, representatives that were uh, delegated by each respective committee. So that's where we could provide input, certainly it's still not enough time.
No, I, I don't disagree with you, and I've been at several of those meetings for a number of years, and my point is, they just. You know, they sit there and they nod very nicely and.
Do what they want.
Do what they want.
Well, in fairness, they have to run, I mean, they're coming up with a budget to run the school. Then, what do they care about what our budget looks like? It doesn't.
Well, yeah, yeah, I guess that's a good way of saying it.
In fair, I like.
But at fifty-six percent of our budget, that's a pretty big slug.
Yeah, I can't disagree.
I mean, the town's budget is what I should say, that our budget is that part, I'm just saying, that's, we don't seem to get early enough to get. The school committee to say, at least sit down and listen for a few minutes and talk with them. We talk with all the other departments usually, we, everybody comes forward and. We discuss things and people kind of understand what we're up against, but.
I do think, and, and I don't know for sure about in the, in the super recent past, you guys know better than I do, but. That if there were significant, at that, at this budget meeting that we're trying to set with FinCom and Wachusett. If there were significant, significant concerns, even last year talking about we were gonna be in the hole, whether. Whether or not Wachusett had, and a lot of our increase to Wachusett was because of our student increase, our student population increase. It was out of our hands, it wasn't something that we had, we had more students going to Wachusett. We have those numbers now, it's not as big of a jump as it was last year and. But we also have to be mindful of what that percentage is, because it's not just the raw numbers, it's a percentage game also. Um, and so. I think that if they heard from all five towns or four of the five towns, that this was absolutely. Directly unattainable, that they may consider having a- additional conversation, not to say that they would, at their meetings. Um, and looking at the, at their budget, but they know that t- the towns are in, in not great shape also.
There's been a number of those meetings in the last several years, the whole, all five towns agreed on a number it should be, they. They say, oh yeah, yeah, that's out, but they come right ahead and the number's higher than what they agreed to, so.
And, and.
What I'm just saying, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
They just.
By the time we already started.
Right, so Austin, has any of our, any one of our sl- uh, school committee members come and seen you and asked you? How the budget's going?
No, but to be fair, I, most of my interaction is with the superintendent. So if you, if you were to ask me the same question, I don't have a number yet from the schools, um. But no, I mean, I think.
But they're, the, the school committee's the one that's voting on it.
Yeah.
If they wanted to vote, there are re- residents of Rutland, they shouldn't, they. Come educated to their meetings as to what Rutland's issues are. No different than you're expecting Joe Q. Public to read through a hundred fifty-two pages. Work just expecting the so- the school committee members to. Pick up the phone and call you and say, hey, how are we doing with the budget this year? Are we looking like this is gonna be an issue, you know, whatever? But I, I know in the past it's never happened, I was maybe hoping that you're more approachable and therefore.
I hope I'm approachable, I don't know if it's the red office that scares people, no, I mean, I, 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 um. I mean, they're, I have, we have to work with them every day, so I, I don't, I don't wanna uh, make any comments to appear as if I'm calling them, I mean. I recommend that they have a tough job, school administration has a tough job, I think that. You know, the meetings that we have every month with school administration, I think are a positive direction, we're, we're learning a lot about what's happening on the school side. Working through the challenges that they have and lord knows, running the largest regional school district, the hell out of them. Um, but I, you know, that, that is one of the things that I, I hope that in the future we can work on, is all five towns. Um, talking about the process a little bit sooner, I mean. We had department requests in November that were sent, and we've, essentially, we've. Gotten to a balanced budget based off of assumptions on the sixty percent number, um. And I'm hoping that. Where we are is in a good position, um, but we'll see in March, or we'll see in February where, where we are, so. Um, but I think that there's certainly some regional school districts across the state. Um, my previous town, they're having their budget discussion and, and votes now, because they recognize that the process needs to happen sooner. And I think that we can get there with Wachusett, I know that there's a lot going on and maybe that. Continued advocacy at the local level, or at the municipal level. To the school committee members, to the school administration, that we need to do this a little bit sooner. Um, you know, they closed out three fiscal years, they've got a lot going on, on the, on the budget.
I wasn't asking about the administration, cause they were much better last year than we've had in the past, I'm just curious about our school committee members.
Yeah, so no, I haven't had conversations about the budget at this point with folks.
At our meeting, at one of our meetings last spring, we had a, you know, about the override stuff and the, and the finance committee and the select board had. I made the, I'm, I think somebody was here, but I made the same, because there was a question about the school budget, et cetera, and I made. A similar spiel to answer the lady's question, and the superintendent, which I had no clue who it was at the time.
The new guy.
Two tears over for me right here, and he said at that meeting that he would. Respond and he would do, you know, talk with you and, and. Keep everybody abreast of what was going on with numbers, so we'd have a better idea of what was going on, and he said he would listen to us, to some of the problems that we, that we have, but.
But he clearly is, cause he's meeting with Austin regularly.
But we don't have any numbers yet though.
Right, right. Well, and, and to be fair, I think he, and this is all certainly public, I think he's talked about it in his reports, I mean, I think that. Structurally, there's still, they have to work on their process too, I mean, I think, I think they initially solicited. From each principal department requests in like December. And like I said, we were pretty much working on refining budgets at that point from budget requests, so. Um, the nature of a hundred plus million dollar operation is, things are a little bit bigger and it takes a lot more time, but. It's not impossible, so certainly I think that as long as the. Administration and the school committee are willing to work on that process.
How big is the state budget?
Yeah, I'm with you, trust me, I'm with you, but you know, it's interesting about a state budget, I mean, they don't, they don't talk about dollars, it's like hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars. But to your point, by statute, they get it done, and on Wednesday, we'll have a draft state budget. But also the legislature, they don't have to follow July one deadlines, just saying.
I know, I agree, I agree with that.
I was gonna say, sometimes, when do we get an actual?
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it, it wouldn't be so bad to have a draft.
Usually a preliminary budget can take.
I get it, but you know, the thing is, a preliminary should be out and discussed and.
Yeah. Or a ballpark, even if it's not published.
Right, but at least that way, there can be some discussions at that point.
It is a public now.
In time, I, I think we can get there, I, I really do, I, I, I don't know, um. I don't know some of the challenges that they're facing, I know obviously. Everyone is dealing with the, um, you know, still the impact of. Um, less revenues, um, school districts can't rely on the Esser funding or ARPA funding anymore for some of their operations, so. Um, so they've gotta, you know, figure out how they're gonna fill the gap.
Right, well, we got lucky, I say lucky, that's probably not the right word, but we, we, we came out okay last year because the override passed. That's not gonna happen in the next several years, people, I'm gonna use Harry's line. I've heard from several people in town about that, you know, how much the taxes are up, and they say, and when is that gonna stop? Cause it's gonna be unsustainable for a lot of people, so we just can't keep going to those percentages. And I don't know the answers either, I know everybody's in the same boat, I'm not saying it, but so, you know. At least talk to them and, and try to get the school committee, who is our committee and our people that we vote for. To at least listen and understand parts of the process and the budget. Uh, if I might, I think that might be one of the issues, I don't know if our townspeople really understand that's the way it's supposed to be. That they are supposed to be for us, not for Wachusett.
Right.
So when they vote for them, they think they're for us. And then it doesn't turn out, they don't listen to us, they don't come.
Well, they're supposed to be looking out for the best of the students.
I was gonna say.
That's the whole thing, it's not necessarily what's gonna fit into the municipal government, it's whatever's gonna work best for the students, and I get that. But it wouldn't, but it wouldn't hurt to pick up the phone and call Austin and say, hey, listen, what are you looking at, are you, are we? Are we breezing through or do we have some challenges? And I know in the past, that's always been the concern, we don't see them until Wachusett shows up, and at that point, it's too late.
But you know, Karen, there is always. I, I agree that they look out for the students, but in doing so, there's always collateral damage. If they put so much money to there, then we have to short it somewhere else for the schools, cause we don't have it for that. So that's what, that's what I'm saying is, they are not looking for the town. To get feedback from us, so we can work with them, how to make everything work for the students.
It's supposed to be representing the people of Roland.
Right.
I understand the students have to be taken care of, but they're representing us. Just as we're sitting here representing the people along with the select boards, representing the whole town.
I agree, I do, I agree to the same thing that Tommy just mentioned too.
Well, there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a cause here, that we're not this override, we preached that we were gonna go a few years here. Those few years are gonna shorten right up here by the end of budget season.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and maybe I'm being, sky is falling, but I, I, let's see what we, that might be gone sooner than everybody thinks.
But, I mean, that's the world we live in right now, it is inflation, like. But, I mean, that's the world we live in right now. It is inflation, like, it's, it is what it is.
Yeah, but we sold.
Inflation's coming down.
It, it is now, but it doesn't mean that we're not living in a, in a place where prices are up significantly from a year ago, so. Whether inflation comes down, it doesn't stop the fact that things are more expensive.
But we sold people on the fact that we were gonna get them.
And we can't control inflation. I'm not, uh, like, it, it should last a little bit longer. I'm not saying it won't, but. There's outside forces and we said that, that we can't control. We made darn sure clear that there was things that could happen. And inflation is one of those, I mean, Tommy said it's fifty-six percent of the budget. That is still on the lower side of a school budget for a town. We're not, we're not. It's not like we're blowing our budget on s- on our school. I think we, we kinda. Put it out of proportion. It's a big, it's a big number and there's no doubt about that, but fifty-six percent. Is still under, I think, the average. I don't know what the average is per se. I know when I looked at it, it was sixty percent was, was. Uh, you know, almost every time I looked at it, it was right around sixty percent, somewhere even seventy, so to say that. You know, fifty-six, it's a big number. There's no getting around that, and I understand people are struggling financially in town, but it's still not. Outside of the norm, so we, we need to not say like, this is a huge problem, cause it is for us. But that doesn't, it's not, doesn't change the fact that we need to educate the kids.
It is a huge problem. If you've got a two and a half percent limit on what you can raise and they come in with a nine percent rate, uh, uh, rate increase every year. It's a, that's a big difference.
Yeah. But that nine percent is not the school saying it's nine percent. That was us having ninety kids or seventy-two kids more. I mean, that's our fault, not their fault.
No, no, their whole budget went up a couple of years, complete.
I get it, I get it, but.
And when our student population, which they explained to us dropped, our. The numbers that we had to pay didn't drop, the numbers still went up, even though we had less students.
And every, I, again, the price of everything continuously goes up. I mean, just the price of paying for things.
Disagree with that. It's gonna keep going up for the next, who knows how many years.
To get, to get back to a date for our budget meeting with. Watch, with the, Wachusett and Rutland. I think typically it's been.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, fourteenth is fine. That's Thursday, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that works for all of FinCom, say, I want FinCom to be kind of the driver on this, I think, is.
What we all want.
Okay.
I mean, the only person I didn't hear was.
No, I'm on the fourteenth. I'm, I'm away the rest of the, that's the only day I can make it.
Okay, so.
I just think that we're gonna try to do the best we can and see where we end up.
I think it'll be.
It's not gonna be good.
Yeah, we do it in the Blair Room, but here at the library, yeah.
And Tamika, you'll follow up with Randy, are you?
Absolutely. Yep, I'll follow up with her till they're back to her tomorrow.
Okay. And would you guys, would FinCom be amenable if BayPath is available that, that day also for BayPath or, I don't know BayPath's timeline.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'll ask them.
And that's the standard six P M?
Do you guys do six?
Uh, that's fine.
Yeah, they'll take five minutes and the other one will be, yeah.
Really?
Thursday, March fourteenth.
Yeah, straightforward and fun.
FinCom, do you have any other business? I'm looking at our agenda and I don't see anything else.
Could, could I just bring up one other question?
Yeah.
Do, do we have, um, was there an incident in town with the. Superintendent making a public apology for this last snowstorm?
Uh, there was an email sent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, but was there an incident, did we have a bus that got stuck?
I'm sure there was just a lot of parents complaining about, having to send their kids or the buses driving.
Get stuck on a hill lining up for Nacogdo.
Well, I know, I know in my neighborhood, they had to drop the kids off at the top, cause they couldn't get down, uh. Are you familiar with, uh, Cleveland?
Yeah.
They couldn't go down the hill, so they dropped every kid off at the top.
Cleveland's a fun hill and it's dry.
Right, right, so that was the thing. They were afraid they wouldn't get the bus back up, so. And that street is still pretty much a dead end, so.
Well, they did it safely, so it's fine.
Yeah.
They just let the kids roll down on their backpacks. Don't worry about the kids.
This is totally unrelated, but I think finance committee and C I P C, Harry, you should hear this. Um, totally not related to anything you just mentioned, I'm sorry. But I just got an email from Green Communities. We just got a two hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, for the. Um, replacement of the heating project at the D P W.
Excellent.
Yeah, two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Nice.
Knocking off our capital blend. Uh, replacing the boiler and infrared heaters, uh, at the D P W, so.
Does that include the doors too?
No doors. Um, but that's a, that's a big thing and, and that'll help and realize some, uh, some cost savings as well on our, uh, utility as well, so. Thanks to Tamika, she did a lot of work on that too.
Thanks, Tamika. And thanks for kind of reviving that Green Communities piece, because I think there were a few years that we kind of didn't. Weren't as aware of what we should be doing.
And I also have to thank, um, Julia Moore of the C M R P C, cause she's been a pleasure to work with and she does a lot of the heavy lifting for us. She kinda comes to us and says, this is the info we need. We give it to her and then she does all the, the heavy work, so I wanna make sure we acknowledge that too. Awesome, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news?
Awesome, thank you.
You just knocked off your big project, Harry.
FinCom, I wanna thank you for coming tonight and having the conversation about the, the warrant. I, I hear your concerns. I think we all hear them and I think we all do share them as well. And also, it could be going on for another six or twelve years, so, um, that's.
That stats Darren will shut us both that night. Tommy will be happy. I'm gonna let some of the people explain themselves. It's gonna be ugly. There's people in town that are already coming. Some of them are in this room.
Let's hope.
They better hang on.
Maybe a few of them are still in Florida, let's hope.
Till May.
Till one. Till May?
Yeah.
Right before the May that week.
I'd like to make a motion that the finance committee means.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Um, if the board is amenable to going back to old business, um, we have the bylaw committee. We had the continued discussion of the appointment process. Um, if you recall from our last meeting, we have the bylaw for the bylaw committee. Um, which speaks to the charge and the membership. Um, and I think the question was how to stagger them because, um. There, it would be five members appointed by the select board, but they would be three-year appointments, except the first year, and how we could best. Arrange that. Tamika, did you, had you had a chance to reach out to Anita to see?
I apologize. I did not get clarification from Anita. How best to stagger it?
No, and I forgot to follow, no, no, I forgot to follow up with you also.
If it's five members, I mean, I think one thing that you could do is you could do. You know, three members at three years, one member at two years, another member at one year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that normally that's often how things are done. Peter, did you have input as to?
It, it's just normal stagger. You try to, you make it so that as many. The, the same number of seat should be appoint, reappointed each year.
Yeah.
So, two for three, two for two, one for one, is the usual.
Yeah.
So, is the board okay with. Putting out the call? I think Tamika had put together kind of a nice, um, flyer for the town, the recruitment for the bylaw committee to. Hopefully begin seeking members. Um, my hope was also that we could have a flyer too at the, um, information sessions also. Um, as well as a special meeting and everything, so hopefully this committee can be seated as close to. The conclusion of the special meeting as possible, having the. Overlap until the bylaws are adopt, uh, signed off by the attorney general. Is my hope. I don't know how the board feels. And if the board is amenable to it, then I would take a motion to, um. Put out the call for members for the bylaw committee with, uh, I think we decided. Two would have three-year expirations, two would have two-year expiration, and one would have one-year expiration.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt's in, I.
Would you, I?
Yeah, I'm black.
Wait, my, I. Thank you, Tamika. Appreciate that. And thank you, Peter, for that feedback also. And Austin as well. Um, moving into, uh, additional new business for Board of Public Works, we have a water abatement request. Included in our packet. There is quite a lot of information, um. And, um, call.
Through the chair, um, I'm directly involved in this, and so I'm going to recuse myself from discussing this matter at all.
Thank you. Um, there was a, uh, we have a, a decent amount of information from our packet, in our packet from, um, the D P W. There was significant increase in water usage, um, over the past few quarters. Um, a new water meter had been installed. Uh, the D P W has been to the house and found no leaks. Um, and the most recent reading is, um, still in, in the high range. Um, and that was, uh, they just finished the water meter readings, um, last, uh. Beginning of this, middle of this, beginning, middle of this month and for the past quarter. Um. It's a water-only account, so there's no, um. S- uh, sewer readings to kind of check or anything. Um, the waters, the water meter stopped working in July of twenty twenty-one. So they began, um, estimating the bills and letters were sent, multiple letters were sent notifying. The residents of the situation and asking. Um, the residents to contact D P W to have a new meter installed. Um, the meter was finally changed out. This past January, uh, of twenty twenty-three, so the past year, and the usage has been higher each quarter since then. Um, we have the application, um. As well as the water usage history and the documentation of communications. So, we can see that from.
Yeah, I have a question. How many live at this residence? Okay, so, who would help me clarify? Are they. Of age where they have no kids and therefore don't use a lot of water? I'm trying to figure out why the jumps here. Huh?
I don't know if I'm allowed to confirm or deny that.
Because as I start seeing this, they're using more and more water and. It's not a question of rates going up, it's a question of a reading. So if you're consistent, and I don't care if you're sixty-five to seventy, your usage pretty much stays the same every year. I can testify to that, okay? So to go from eleven thousand actual to thirteen thousand, to go from eight thousand to thirteen thousand actual, something's going on there. And I don't know if the meter's starting to fail or if they actually are using more water. That's what I don't understand.
According to D P W, the water is being used.
Huh?
According to D P W, the water is being used and there's no evidence of leaks or issues with the meter.
That's a new meter. What was you, cause the new meter's showing sixteen, the old meter was showing, say, nine.
Those are based on estimated readings because they were unanswered. Oh.
I'm looking at, going back to two thousand nineteen. Actual, then I go to two thousand twenty, it jumps to twelve. So, did they put in a swimming pool? What are they using water for that that jumps that much?
Those are the readings, Harry, not, that's the reading column, not the usage.
Right, but I'm looking at the readings going up, so you're saying usage is four ninety, so. And now it's four hundred, five hundred. I see what you're saying.
That it keeps adding on. My, that, I was looking, cause going back to those earlier actuals, they're all, you know, four hundred, five hundred, seven, eight. And then all of a sudden, this last one was sixty-three hundred. That's.
I know, so it's like. So, is there a theory on?
Twenty-three?
What are you doing or what's happening or? Cause I'm, if, if it's a meter problem at sixty-three hundred, then I understand why they're asking for.
But D P W's been out, it says water department has been out to the house and found, I believe they tested the meter and. Checked for leaks and found no leaks. Um, cause generally, even like a toilet, if it's running occasionally or something, you'll blow through the water or if a faucet's left dripping or something. Um.
D P W, is that the opinion that there is nothing wrong, that they have found evidence of?
Either with the meter or a leak, yeah.
So, are there any indications from the individual? Why this bill is so high? Are they just saying it's too high and we don't wanna pay it? Uh, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out. Cause to go from a thousand actual in April to ten thousand in October, that is six months later and you're doing. Nine thousand percent increase. Nine, nine times, come on, what happened here? It's either the meter or they're actually using it. There can't be a, if they're saying there's no leaks in the house anywhere, anything, then I'm trying to figure out. What is the actual they're complaining about here?
Well, that's why, you know, looking at the baitment request, it just states that we feel the amount charged is well over previous bills, which is accurate, but if their usage is higher than.
Right.
That doesn't.
Uh, that's what I'm trying to.
And there's no.
There's no documentation saying, here's what we're doing. They didn't explain, that I could see, here's, here's how we're using the water. This is all we're doing with it.
That nothing is different.
That nothing is different.
Exactly.
Right, someone turned the faucet on and went for a vacation.
I mean, I think, generally, uh, and it's always at the, at the pleasure of the board, historically. Especially when there's been such clear documentation that there is documented increase on the usage side and there's no leaks that have been found. And communication has been tough, I think, um, to get answers from, from the residents, um. And so that's a challenge also, um, it, it's at the pleasure of the board, but. It appears, all the documentation that we have appears that the water has been.
Yeah, let's say they present something that. Looks different, you know? You have to go based on the word of the, the D P W. They're the ones that inspect the.
Right, and I understand that it may be a financial hardship and, you know, I would encourage them to reach out to D P W and treasure collector and. You know, look for payment plan options and really, really be mindful that there's no leaks found, so what are they doing throughout the days and nights? That are potentially.
That's just it. If they're, if they can provide an explanation for some reason, provide more information that could be considered, that's one thing, but there's nothing here that suggests. That they're not using it.
And to me, that would be a valid point. Here's our usage. We don't do anything. We don't have a pool, we don't wash our cars, we don't do any of these things that would use nine times the amount of. In six months, so either the meter is bad, that's the only thing we could figure, or they're using a lot of water for some reason.
And D P W seems to be of the mindset that the meter, I, I, is, is accurate. So.
Well, I, I hate to force a replay, I know, I don't know how you test meters, but I'd hate to force the individual to say. Yeah, the, the, the electric, the electrical item that's judging us for our rates is perfect. That's what I hate to say to the individual. Can the D P W tell us why there's no problem with that meter? How they've checked it and that stuff? I mean, I don't feel like I want, you know, I feel like there's some things that are missing, facts that are missing here.
I mean, I think, well, I think we have documentation that there's been, you know, first notice, second notice, third notice sent as far as getting the. The meter replaced, um, and then it's quite possible that the meter replaced.
Was more accurate.
The, the current meter is more accurate than the previous meter, because if it was failing, who knows how long it was failing. And they were just get, receiving estimated bills based off of their kind of previous. Usage. You can see that even back when, at their last few actuals in twenty twenty-one. Um, that those numbers were starting to creep up for the usage. It was almost up at seven. Seven hundred eighty gallons, and then it went to estimated usage, which dropped back down. And then from seven hundred, once they had the new meter installed, to a thousand, and then I agree that the increase over the past couple quarters is. Is high, but also maybe not necessarily out of mind for a, a new functioning meter.
I'm not sure, without any other information or evidence to say that they're not using it.
So I don't, I don't. I'd like. Uh, I'd like to ask Paul, but I know I can't, uh, because I don't wanna put him in the middle of this either. But I, I don't, I can't. If the meter is accurate, then their usage is the problem, not the meter.
What, what happens if we, if this abatement goes through, the next quarter bill goes through and the meter readings are exactly the same, it's.
Right.
What happens then?
Right.
The usage hasn't changed, the usage is still high because that's what's being used. They get built for it.
Then I think they would, I hate to say it, that then possibly they should come before the board, file an other abatement, explain to us what their water usage is. Or DPW, because.
And. I just talked to the DPW about. I mean, even if.
It's two people.
If, but if we look back, and I don't know for how long they've been, but if we even look back in twenty seventeen, they were almost at nine hundred usage, and that was with their old meter. So there, there have been definite like blips where it's gone up, and that was with the old meter. And then the meter failed, and they went to estimate it af- because three attempts have been made, three or more attempts have been made to get out, to have the meter reinstalled, and it wasn't.
Greenhouse in the backyard or something?
Yeah. Maybe it's, maybe it's the neighbor. You know?
Yeah. Well, they need to speak to the neighbor.
So, I mean, I.
I don't know.
I think I'm unfortunately of the mindset with the information that we are provided is that the usage is, is there and that.
Can we put this off and give them an opportunity to come, come before the board and give us an explanation? Is that worth trying or no? Where it's confidential?
Well, you know, it would certainly be up to the person if they were willing to reveal their identity, so to speak. Um, but it's my understanding that it is not easy for these particular applicants to leave their home.
Okay.
And come to a meeting, so I don't know if that would be an option for them. Um, and I don't believe Zoom would be a good option either.
Well, then I don't think we have any choice but to go based on.
I mean, can they always submit?
You can't extend it. It's just, extend the offer to have them come. I just don't know that they would.
Well, you know what? I guess I'd like DPW to, or s- I don't know if they can. What I'd like is more clarification from the individual.
So here it says.
Here's what we're using our water for, and I don't know how we can go and nine, eight thousand gallons more in six months with what we're doing. So.
So in the note from DPW, it says the Water Department went yesterday, January ninth, twenty twenty-four, and checked the meter, faucets, and toilet, and found no leaks in the house. The account is a water-only account as they have a septic system. So there's no reconciliation on the, on the sewer side.
Yeah.
Um, so I, it, i- in the documentation that, that we are provided, DPW has done the best of their due diligence, and it has not been easy to obtain information from, from the residents, and they've included, these are, you know, twenty-five ways to save on your water bill. DPW has been proactive saying, hey, we've noticed an increase in usage. Make these, check these items, have, call us and we'll come out and help you check and everything. And it was just in this couple of weeks ago that they were able to go in and, and, and do that due diligence. Um, I. Is there anything, if this, if this abatement's not granted, is there anything stopping them from submitting another?
No, I don't believe that there's any requirements that say you can't submit another one at another time if you want to. Yep.
See, I guess that's what I would look for, is if you're asking an abatement, don't just tell us that you pay too much. Tell me why you, your water isn't being used. Give me some clarification.
Thanks. Unfortunately, without having them here to ask questions, all we can go on is what's provided.
Right.
And what we see.
All right, so what do we do?
You wanna extend it and give them a chance till the next meeting?
I mean.
Reach out to them and ask for clarification, why they think their meter is too high, if they blame it on the meter or?
Even if it's Zoom, do they sound like, no? Okay. I thought, I know that was probably a long shot, but.
That's, they, it's, Tom asked if they could do Zoom. My best guess is probably.
Yeah, I think so, but it's worth throwing out there.
Sounds like we're dealing with some seniors here, who perhaps, who can't do these things. And I'd like to give the seniors a second chance.
I agree.
That's all.
And I agree, and I think also we need to be able to have them meet us partway, which I think is some of my frustration, is that DPW has documented multiple times to try to make contact and hasn't had that opportunity. And like I said, we do see that there are blips, that the, the one thousand usage is not totally off the radar from different parts. Um, so there's quite possibly something going on. Um, whether a faucet's accidentally left on overnight or in the morning or, or something um, that the water is, is truly being consumed and so.
Yeah, cause we're going from April to October, and they'll ask which is through the summer months.
What's the next street?
I hate to say this, but your point earlier, I mean, I don't know their layout or the house or the neighborhood, but
Eleven, twelve.
Maybe there is some shady stuff going on, I don't know. Is the guy next door a detailer?
So I think the next one.
I don't know.
Yeah, because we haven't been given any for rush.
So this, the last one that's on here is from October thirteenth. Do we have one? So yes, she said.
December.
So she said, the very first page of our packet update, Tam- hi Tamika, we just finished water, new readings, and just to let you know that account used three thou- three thousand five hundred fifteen cubic feet this past quarter, so. Something happened within the last song.
Right.
It went down significantly. That's, that's a pretty high blip. So, but again, without information as to.
Right. If the meter's working, then there's another problem.
Right. If it was, if it was significantly higher again, then maybe, but it's going down, so. Yeah, okay. So there are those blips, and it seems like maybe that, you know, one to two thousand is the new kind of normal with the new meter and everything, for whatever reason, and then they just had been accustomed to the four hundred-ish estimated. And now that they have an actual meter that's doing the readings, it's.
I mean, I, I, I think it's great that our DPW was allowed in the house to check to make sure the toilets were functioning properly, if there wasn't a problem, but it was okay there, so.
So, do we need a, a motion to extend?
No.
Just hold off?
No findings at this point till further information.
I do.
But do we need to set a ti- like within the, before our next meeting?
Yeah, I would say that's at the board's discretion. Um, that would be helpful to me, so I can include that in the communication to them and to the DPW that there's some sort of.
Timeline.
Timeline on which they have to respond before a decision will be made. So if you wanna do it for the next meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
If, if this is something that, we don't wanna draw it out, it's already been drawn out, so.
Right. Either get the answer next time or.
Yeah. Do you wanna motion for that, Tamika? And you, you're comfortable with the information that the board's requesting? Thank you. Moving on, um, we have the Historical Commission, we have a resignation of Sheila Junkins that we need to accept. Um, I believe we have her um resignation um that was submitted to the Town Clerk's office. Um.
Yep.
And she accepted a new job opportunity that prevents her from attending to the tasks and responsibilities.
New motion?
Yep.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Sheila Junkins from the Historical Commission.
Another motion, is there a second? Second motion and a second. Um, we don't really have any say in resignation, it's just an acknowledgement of said resignation. So I'll take roll call, Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye with regrets. I know she was a active member and holds a lot of history, so.
Yep.
Is this her, is this her first term or is this?
She's been on for a while, and she, she also had to resign at the Historical Society as well, unfortunately. So we kind of lost our liaison, direct liaison with the Historical Society for updates, so.
Okay. She was also very involved in the three-hundredth anniversary committee.
Um, and then moving on, we have uh Economic Development Commission, some good news. We have a, an interested community member, Faith Mayor. Um, she is a local business owner, and she has served, um, she was, I believe, a reporter for a local excuse me, uh, newspaper uh some time ago. So she's quite interested in keeping a pulse on what's going on in town, and has both a professional and personal interest um in building bus- the business community. Um, and we have the Chair of Economic Development um recommendation as well. So I would take a motion to appoint Faith Mayor. Um, I don't remember, Tamika, what this term is.
Um, I believe this is an alternate member, which would be a one-year term. Um, and it's a regular vacancy, it's not filling a resignation. Um, so it would be a one-year term.
And Randy Jones is Chair, right? And he approved, everything's okay?
Yeah, it's on the back, it's on the flip side of your paper, his approval, sorry. It was short and sweet, but.
Okay, okay. All right, um, anyone have a problem with it? I make a motion to appoint Faith Mayor to the Economic Development Commission.
We have a motion, is there a second? I would just, I'm just trying to look, but I would just like to confirm that it's the one-year alternative.
Sure.
Does anybody know where I'll pack, oh, I'm sorry, there's a motion.
No, no.
Now, does anybody know where I'll pack Ellips Farm is?
Yeah, it's on Intervale, right before it turns to Charnak.
Oh.
Yeah.
She makes great socks.
Really?
They're warm.
Wow, okay. Okay, is there a second?
Uh, so.
We have just double-checked in the term.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's, it's, uh, there's two vacancies for alternative member. Um, and it doesn't say anything about what their terms are, it says that they're appointed to serve three-year terms, but I can't remember if the, I feel like the alternative members were more frequent.
Usually the alternate members are one-year. I know that that's the case on um the ag com that they serve for one-year terms. But if it doesn't specifically state it in the charge, I imagine it would be at the board's discretion.
So I would, I think for alternative members, they're three years, that would put at twenty twenty-seven.
Yep.
Um. There, if the board is amenable to doing a one-year term. It's, it's for an alternate?
Yeah.
Is, does, is she aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I believe so. Um, yeah, because when I think about it, the alternates on the ZBA are three-year terms. So I don't think there's a specific rule as to how long a term has to be. I think it's just been dependent on that particular board or commission.
And it just says here, all it says is members appointed by the select board to serve three, for three-year terms, so that's all, so I would default to it being a.
I, I just found an email from the previous town administrator drafting the charge, and it looks like the term expirations for alternates were one years.
Okay, well, there we go.
One year, okay.
All right, so as an alternate member for one year, sorry.
Say it again. Uh, I make a motion to appoint Faith Ma- uh Mayor as an alternate member for one year to the Economic Development Commission.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye with appreciation. It's nice to kind of finally have a, an interested member for some boards and openings, commissions openings. Um, I meant to include it in my update or my opening remarks, and I forgot. We have a number of board and commission openings as well. I believe that they're listed on the website as well.
Yeah, I just created a, a new page.
Yeah, and so please, please, if you're listening, if you're still with us, check those out as well. These are appointed positions. Um, so it's not, you don't have to go through the election process. Um, it's helpful to attend a meeting, speak with the members of the, a member or two of the committee, and talk to the Chair especially. All that information can be found on the website, so I appreciate that. Our upcoming meeting is February fifth. Um, February fifteenth is our special Wintertown meeting for the bylaws. And then we'll have a Tuesday meeting, February twentieth, because President's Day is that Monday. Um, and just as a reminder, we have the inform- public information sessions for the um bylaws, these up, next three Sundays from one to four here.
Those are recorded.
Yes, and they are recorded, it should be available on YouTube, so if you missed this past Sunday, those are there. All of our conversations with the board um are also on YouTube as well, so if you're looking for some exciting um evening television.
Sweets, anybody? I heard there's donuts.
Oh.
At the public information.
Very good.
Yeah.
So is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye. We are adjourned at eight twenty-six P M.
All right.